I can't see a thing. All set? All right. Uh, this is the Tuesday, October 22nd Planning Board Meeting. Anybody have anything they want to speak about that's not on the agenda? Excellent. Uh, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from September 24th and Jess's edits today? Any other suggestions, corrections? Can I get a motion to approve Jess's edits?
I see a motion.
I'll second that. Hold on, favor?
Bye, iron.
Opposed? And I guess Amber stands. Actually, we're not at that meeting. Uh, no ANRs, right? And I'll segue into the welcome of our new Planning Board Member, Amber Bowles. Welcome, thanks for bailing us out.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome to your first of many meetings.
Yeah, welcome to the jungle.
All right, first matter, uh, public hearing for Ten Industrial Parkway, DNR Management. Somebody here for that?
Yes, um, excuse me, my name's Mark Reed from here at the Surveys. And I'm David Deets from Deets Construction and DNR Management. But fortunately, I've got to, uh, leave shortly for another meeting because this was a rescheduled meeting from two weeks ago. But I'd like to submit to the board a set of revised plans that were emailed this afternoon for Sheet 2 and 3, based on comments from Jim Gracia and review of it. So I have five copies of the revised plans and a letter. So probably go to you, right?
Yes, thank you.
So these are the same ones that got emailed out?
Yes.
The same ones that were given to the same management.
Same ones, so I didn't know.
That's fine.
Those are the small ones.
Yeah, okay. And I do have some small ones, so.
Thank you.
Just briefly, before David starts to talk about the project in itself, Deets Construction currently is on Industrial Parkway, uh, at 7 Industrial Drive, which is on the opposite side of the street. And David can, we're going to talk to you about that part of it, and then I can pick it up from there. Hi, I'm David Deets. And, um, DNR Management is our company, David and Richard, my brother, um, that owns this property. So Deets Construction, as Mark said, is located across the street. And, um, what we've done is Deets Construction has leased out this entire site of 7 Industrial Parkway to Columbia Gas of Massachusetts. So they are coming in here and putting an operations facility here that they're going to start construction on very shortly. So it kind of put us without a shop. It was a very good opportunity. And we have owned this land, um, for a little over 20 years. And we also own 12 Industrial Parkway here, which we had permitted back in 1994 and had our construction company with the open storage of equipment and materials here. So, um, what we plan on doing is, the plans are showing that we're putting up a new building very similar to the building that we have across the street. Um, square footage-wise is very similar. Um, number of our employees at this business is not changing. Um, and, um, the gas company to lure them in, they wanted an existing building, not a new construction project, um, in here. So, um, this is a plan of the existing, uh, currently, right now, we have a developed parking lot right here that our employee, our whole parking, um, parks on here right now. And as Mark said, um, uh, these plans have gone in front of Jim Gracia, and we met him for the purposes of stormwater management. They've been changed to his comments on this, um, to facilitate meeting, um, stormwater management, um, in this. Um, so, I guess, not to interrupt you, but I guess the key, um, concern that, from the original plans that were submitted to the board, um, that Jim and David and I talked about, is creating two water quality swales that are shown on the plan. One being, uh, along this boundary line here that handles this parking area, which stormwater will go into this area, into a control structure, and then go into a storm scepter, which further cleanses the stormwater before it discharges out into the street. And then a second stormwater swale, um, to be located here to facilitate the rear of the property. The same, um, design criteria where stormwater will go into this basin and discharge out to a storm scepter and eventually out into Industrial Drive. And both, or all the stormwater from the pavement area and gravel areas will be treated, uh, through one of two storm sectors. Uh, there's a larger C-900, has a bigger capacity to it. Um, and to make sure that if there's any issues with contamination, they're collected and retained on the site before it discharges out to the street. So with that, I do apologize, I've got to leave. And David can handle the rest of it. And, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, no problem. Um, so this site is extremely similar to what we have across the street, whereas we plan on having a paved employee parking lot, uh, equipment storage, um, and, um, two fuel tanks that are shown on here, which we happen to have over on our other site right now. Um, and a small paved, um, customer parking lot. Nothing too earthshadowing.
So this is a special permit, Anna Site Plan Approval, Anna Stormwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all three. So the, the reason is that the office building, um, is Site Plan Approval in the industrial zone. It's this, it's this outdoor storage is the special permit part of it. Um, and then we do have a stormwater permit, which went into effect about a year ago. And so when you have a disturbance of over an acre, it triggers the stormwater permit. So the stormwater permit, I sent you, it's in the general ordinances, it's not in the zoning ordinances. Um, it, the review committee for stormwater permit depends on what, where it goes, because this application's coming through the Planning Board. The Planning Board is the stormwater permit authority under this application. Sometimes if, if somebody's just going before the Conservation Commission and they don't have no need to go before Planning Board, then they're the ones who grant the permit, the stormwater permit. On occasions, for if it's a by right use, then it's just the city engineer. So, in this event, we, we, we always ask the city engineer for an opinion on any special permit project anyway. So he's doing an extra level of review as, um, as the city engineer under the stormwater authority, although I understand our planning board member has some stormwater expertise as well, so.
Excellent.
That's helpful. Because the ordinance really isn't big.
Put it in your binder with the rest of the stuff. This isn't going to be the first time this happens.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we'll always defer to the city engineer. He's the official opinion that we'll receive on stormwater issues.
All right.
So, so for, so for the decision, the decision will be combined, the Site Plan Approval and the special permit would be, will be combined into one decision. And then the stormwater permit, um, I don't know if we'll do a separate decision for that or not, or whether we'll just try to incorporate it. I'll check with this.
Okay.
This is sort of all new territory for all of us.
All right.
This isn't, hasn't been applied too many times yet, so.
There's one thing I didn't quite understand. Can I ask a question to you?
Sure.
It occurred to me as I was going through this that outdoor storage and stormwater may have some ties, like if there was something left outside that could get into the ground soil and such. Is there any overlap between, between the two, especially like two fuel tanks, as was mentioned?
Sure, these are all good questions that you need to ask the applicant in regards to outdoor storage. And that's going to be addressed, and if it's going to be leaking into the ground, and all very good questions.
What's the condition of the two fuel tanks?
Yep, exactly. So, um, uh, the operation that we have here is very similar to what we're doing across the street. Um, with the, um, due to the equipment being parked there, um, we are parking construction equipment, and our construction equipment is planned and being parked out in here. And what Mark Reed has done is, you'll notice, we do not have any open catch basins out here, this is a gravel parking lot. So all this sheet runoff has to run 160 feet across the ground and then into this open swale. Um, that open swale has a sump, and the runoff water from then still goes and gets directed through a storm scepter unit. So in the event if there was a piece of equipment that had a fuel tank burst, um, there is redundancy. We have catch basins with sumps and eliminator hoods. We also have a storm scepter in here to collect the, um, if there is any fuel in here. We have operated, um, across the street since '06. We have had no instances, and actually just passed, uh, a, um, Phase 2 21E over there before the gas company would even entertain, uh, renting our property. So we've been able to keep it very clean over there. These two fuel tanks, and talked yesterday to the fire protection captain about what we would need to do with these fuel tanks. Uh, the equipment is across the street, and it gets inspected and tested every year. He said that those fuel tanks are, um, uh, fine and meet current codes to take them, demobilize them from over here, set them up over here with, um, a permit from the fire department. Um, the regulations, we have to follow, um, a mass standard regulation for putting fencing around it, spill containment, um, and we have that across the street. And those same regulations are still in the, in what we have here. So that will be done through a permit with the fire department. These are above-ground tanks, modern tanks, they're not below-ground tanks, and they're double-wall tanks. So if there's any leak in them, um, the, uh, inner space between them, um, the fuel we collect sets off a sensor, and then we know.
How big are they?
About 2,000 gallons each. And they're both for diesel fuel. One being on-road diesel fuel and one being off-road diesel fuel.
I'm going to try. When you transfer those tanks from one spot to another, who's going to inspect them once they're installed?
Um, the fire department. The fire, we have to pull a permit, it's a mass state permit, and then the fire protection, um, uh, captain will come over and inspect these.
And then you're going to have a fence around it?
Yes. So we, we have two fencing closures. One is we're having a fencing closure around, um, our equipment, um, and that is a eight-foot-high chain link fence. And second, we have a six-foot chain link fence enclosure that's locked every night around each of the fuel tanks.
Oh, each?
Yeah, they're two separate ones. Because of tax, honor of tax purposes, they have to be kept separately.
David, what's the business that you're actually doing in the building there?
Deets Construction.
So is it just administrative staff that you have there, or?
Um, no, it's administrative staff in the front office, which is 2,400 square feet, and then, um, 7,000 square feet of the steel building for the maintenance and storage of our equipment.
Okay. So it's, it's, um, but you mentioned customers as well, I mean.
There is occasional that we will have a client come to our office to meet us to discuss a project.
Okay. So how many employees do you have total that work there?
25 employees.
Okay. And what do you have for parking spots in that lot?
Uh, we have 32 spots paved, lined up, 32 spots here, but we also have undefined parking, a lot of undefined parking in here. But we have 32 paved spots, um, and handicap accessibility, um, spot here also.
And the repair work, I imagine, can generate some waste and things like that. What are your procedures in place? I imagine you're doing the same thing at the other site.
Yeah, doing the same thing at the other site. Um, we, um, uh, at the other site across the street, and we will have here, we have what's known as a waste oil burn. So all of our oil that we generate, we burn to create heat for our office. Um, so we, we do not, um, uh, that's how we handle our waste oil. Um, all of our antifreezes, anything from that, it's all collected and recycled by recycling services that we have. And, um, there's no power washing outside, or, um, all the regular standards that we have to meet every single year. We have our fuel tanks inspected, fire department comes in and inspects, um, our waste oil burner and our collection tanks. We also have lubricants, bulk storage lubricants in here that are in, um, tanks for our equipment.
With the fuel storage tanks, do you have secondary containment beyond the double wall?
Um, no, the secondary containment is the double wall, and then we have spill containment for the filling of it. So the filling of it has spill containment, and, um, then the fuel tanks are double wall, and the second wall is 110% of what the initial fuel is.
And what do you do if a spill happens?
If a spill happens, we have spill kits with Saranac. Um, there's, there's two of it, it's, if a spill happens, when they're filling the tank, Saranac fuel would be the person that do all of our filling, and we have a spill containment kit at each of these areas and fire extinguisher. If there's a spill when we're taking the fuel out going into one of our trucks, we also, each of our trucks, we have spill containment and a general spill containment area right here for, um, uh, with equipment if there is a spill. And, um, and you'll notice there are no, um, catch basins, open grates, or anything around here. Um, the closest one is probably 80, um, I want you, about 100 feet away.
So these tanks are just set on a concrete pad, they're not elevated?
Um, they're specific. They're set on an eight-inch thick concrete pad, they're elevated six inches from the ground. Um, they are UL approved tanks specifically for the storage of diesel fuel. And, um, then the metering, the filling, the venting is all mass standard, the way it's hiked.
What, what's preventing these from getting hit? Are there any like corners or anything on it?
Yes, there, the, the fencing around this is, has a gate so only a person can go into it. The equipment is parked outside. We also have concrete jersey barriers that go around the outside of this that prevent a piece of equipment for somehow driving into them.
You guys have deliveries, that sort of stuff going on with regulatory there? Do you have a loading dock?
Well, there is no loading dock, no. Our, our deliveries would just be at ground level in here, and, um, they are UPS deliveries and office supply deliveries, but fairly minor.
And you're pointing to the backside there rather than the parking lot, is that where they would come in, or?
Um, our deliveries would either come in, we have a paved parking lot right here, so they would come in here and then leave, and/or we have an entrance to the office right here where they come in here and deliver to the office.
Okay.
And we have this set up in such a way that we're having an eight-foot fence with a gate across here, right across here, so our employee parking is not, um, uh, encased in the fencing, but then all of our equipment is encased in the fencing. And this gets shut and locked every single night.
What's on the site right now?
Right now, there is an existing parking lot on the site in here that, um, we've been parking for probably over 10 years, and it's in fairly similar with the shape of what is here right now. And then this was a grass field, um, uh, to here, and Deets Construction currently on number 12 utilizes all this land in here. There's another six acres of land in here that Deets Construction operates on.
Okay, so are there any trees on the existing lot?
No.
Nothing like that?
No.
No waterways or anything like that?
No, no wetlands, no waterways. It's a, it's a cleared site.
Conservation Commission has reviewed the application and provided.
Yeah, we've been since 1994 operating on this site here.
What about, uh, mining and snow removal?
Okay. Um, right now, um, lighting isn't specifically shown on here. We, um, what we plan on is doing wall packs around this in here. Um, we operate, um, we start operating it before the sun goes up, and, um, our work will bring us into the nighttime hours. So, um, we plan on having a lit parking lot, um, a lit where the equipment storage is.
What's a, what's a wall pack?
A wall pack. So this building, this building, um, is 23 feet high, so it's similar to our building is right now. So instead of having a pole with a light on it, it's on the side of the building.
Okay. And what about, um, what, security overnight, anything like that?
Yeah, well, we got, we got, we've made the paper a couple times over here with thefts in there. Uh, you wouldn't think it in a quiet town, but they've come, they've stolen snowplows, um, take stuff out of back of our pickup trucks, um, Zack Construction, uh, the machine shop, they've all been hit in the last couple of years. Um, our scrap metal dumpster never seems to get higher than this, it just kind of disappears in there. So we're doing this a little bit differently in here. Here, um, at our, at our existing facility, we're pretty low-key, we don't have a total fence enclosure. This, we're doing a total fence enclosure around with security cameras on the building. And likewise, Columbia Gas is coming in, they are doing a total fence enclosure and security.
Anybody have any other questions?
I just want to, maybe it's because I'm typing that I missed that, but basically it's fencing and lighting.
And security? Yes. And cameras?
Oh, only cameras, okay, that's what I was.
This future building addition, would you just add another structure, or would you expand?
No, it would be connected. We connected it onto this because you always want to have a little bit of room to grow. Right now, this mimics our existing building, and, um, uh, within, um, our setbacks, we can put another 25-foot addition on here, so we wanted to put it on the plans now. Um, if, if that, um, does come in the future, it'd be a pretty easy expansion for us.
So you're looking for approval for that expansion area as well?
Yeah, we're looking as, looking at this building as its entirety in here. Um, we only plan on building this part of the building right now, but this future, um, meets with all the setbacks, so we wanted to put that future addition on there.
What kind of lighting are you doing for the overnight?
Um, we are going to have their, um, we're going to need LED wall packs along, um, on the building, and then, um, Mark Reed didn't have a photometrics plan put on here, but we're going to want, um, the employee parking lot lit with probably two poles in here, unless he thinks there needs to be more to light it. And, um, our equipment storage area, um, really for, um, enough light for security lighting. We don't have any op, you know, real operations going on at night, it's more just security.
Are there any neighbors nearby that?
There are no, there's no residential in, in anything. Uh, Route 10, about 800 feet in here, and we're, um.
O'Neill Street?
O'Neill Street, probably about 1,000 feet down the street, and then woods back in here, and Parkway Machinery, not Parkway Machinery, the, the old Parkway Machinery is right over there.
I just want to say one thing, they do a class, class A job with the building that they have now, but in the operation they run down there.
Well, thank you. It's a, a new, modern building, as compared to some of the older industrial, it really, it really looks nice.
One more. The maintenance of the swales.
Yes.
Do you have a maintenance plan?
Yes, in the stormwater permit, there is a full, um, maintenance plan in there.
Let's see if I can make sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, the city engineer commented in his letter about how, uh, he thought the plan complied with the stormwater ordinance, but he hasn't seen a full operation and maintenance plan that's forthcoming?
Yes, it is. Uh, how, what's that dated, that letter?
This is the 22nd.
Today, okay, so.
He might just not have seen it.
Yeah, he just might not have seen it. I know Mark Reed.
He sent it to Mark.
Okay.
So Mark was CC'd on the email, of course.
Okay.
Anybody else?
He was okay with.
Right, he was, I mean, it's got to be.
But he just wants it as part of a condition.
Right.
Yeah.
The fire department also talked about the sprinkle, sprinkler system.
Yeah, so this building will be fully fire protected, um, a fire protection system. It's over 7,500 square feet, so, um, the code requires it to be that. The other thing I would say too is to, um, uh, we would have liked to come here about a month ago, but because of scheduling with an election and a lack of a quorum, we pushed off to today. So we are a little over a month behind schedule of where we wanted to be, um, and winter's coming, so, um, any way that's in your way to expedite this process, that it helps us.
Anybody?
In my review, I don't see anything that stands out to me. Personally, I'm ready to approve these things.
Anybody else? Planning Department, have any concerns or questions?
I feel like everything's been addressed. As long as you incorporate what Jim Gracia was asking in terms of conditions, and if there's any other conditions that you feel needs to be put on this based on your discussion, you should need to discuss them now.
I don't think there are, I mean, there's no residences nearby, it doesn't seem like there's any issues with, you know, hours of operation or wetlands or anything like that.
This is exactly the kind of business that I would want in that area.
All right, do we have a motion, guys? Or dial?
I'm just wondering, with the O&amp;M plan, is that your maintenance of the catch basins? Is that what?
It's going to be the full stormwater system, so the stormwater scepters in here, the grassy swales, the catch basins, the sumps, the sweeping of the parking lot, sure will address all those points.
And how are you held accountable for that?
Um, I don't know, in there. Uh, right now, um, that is our business at Deets Construction, is doing that stuff. Um, we'll see whatever, um, Mark Reed comes up with on the maintenance plan, and we will adhere to it. If it, uh, we don't have large, large detention basins that have to be moved, they're just little grassy swales.
The storm scepter is probably going to need to be cleaned once a year at minimum, depending if there's any sediment that happens there.
I would, yeah, I would think in the maintenance plan, it's going to say that all the sumps would be being cleaned once a year, I would imagine. Um, we, over here, we credit, we do a low salt for our snow control over here, and, um, so, uh, it's not a highly salted area.
So, did I hear you right, saying that all these are bundled up? So any motion would be to approve the stormwater permit, the special permit, the site plan?
I think there's a way to, to, to put it all into one permit and expedite it and streamline it without having to create multiple pieces of paper. I think that would be.
So I'll start with this, and please edit this. Um, the motion to approve, um, the stormwater permit, special permit, site plan approval for Ten Industrial Parkway contingent upon, um, the requirements of the city engineer and the fire department.
Yeah, let's be explicit and say that the city engineers review and approval of their operation and maintenance plan for their stormwater system.
Oh, I can't take that fast, all right.
Sorry.
Contingent upon the city engineers.
You can look at the letter, I pull it out word for word. It basically says, "A building permit shall not be granted until they have an O&amp;M plan that's been approved and reviewed by the city engineer."
Contingent upon the city engineers.
What? Review and approval.
Review and approval. Is that it?
The building permit will not be granted. That's the teeth that you have.
The building permit will not be granted. What about the fire department?
I think that's standard building code. I, that's, that's nothing to be a condition. I mean, they're going to have to be sprinkler, that's, they can't get a bill, they're not going to be able to get a certificate of occupancy unless they have that, and meet those building requirements.
All right, so, so far, it's motion to approve the stormwater permit, special permit, and site plan contingent upon the city engineer's review and approval, the building permit will not be granted.
Review and approval of the operation and maintenance plan under the stormwater ordinance.
Of the operation and maintenance plan under the stormwater ordinance. Okay? The building permit will not be granted.
Well, I mean, it's conditioned upon that for the building permit to be granted. It's, it's all part of the same sentence.
So contingent upon the city engineer's review and approval of the operation and maintenance plan under the stormwater ordinance, the building permit will be granted.
Yeah, I think the last sentence.
The last sentence.
Oh, I got it right here, I just saw it.
You've got to read the last sentence.
Building could be built by now.
All right, so we've got the first part. Motion to approve the stormwater permit, special permit, and site plan. And then, originally, I had contingent upon the city engineers' review and approval of the operation and maintenance plan under the stormwater ordinance, the building permit will be granted. And now you've got, in addition, the proposed sanitary sewer and water system connections are acceptable to our department.
The last sentence of that paragraph before it was right here. All you really need to add at the end is prior to the issuance of a building permit. So, review and approval, we had review and approval of the O&M plan and the stormwater ordinance prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay, got it.
You ready for a second? All in favor?
Who seconded?
Chad.
Aye.
I opposed the sanctions. All right.
Best of luck.
So, in terms of paperwork and appeal periods, so the site plan review does not have an appeal period, the special permit portion does. So theoretically, you could, once the decision is filed with the clerk, pull for building permit for the office portion of it. The remainder of the site technically has to go through the 20-day appeal period.
And who files that the...
We'll draft it. They have 14 days to draft the decision, then it will get filed with the clerk. So, I need their signature in order to get it stamped.
14 days and 20 days approximately.
But you could theoretically pull for the front portion for the actual buildings, because that's part of the site plan review.
Okay.
It's the special permit.
And the special permit is the storage of our materials?
It's the outdoor storage.
But that's actually the use, not the building of the facility, it's the use.
Right, it's kind of completely.
Yeah, okay.
But we can talk.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Now, the city's actually putting another piece of commercial property on the deck.
Taking it away from North Hampton.
Do you wanna change the agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna say, does anybody have a problem moving the public hearing on the amendments up, so we can let these two gentlemen leave before I dive into the medical marijuana?
Thank you, me too.
All right, so next up is the joint public hearing on proposed minor amendments and clarifications to the zoning ordinance.
So, I was gonna say, we're in session. I don't have any problem. I'm ready to go along with what looks at. As I say, last time we met, we reviewed and put some of this new language together. Jessica, did you make these changes?
I did, I made those changes. And then, there was also requests for additional information that I believe Councillor Cobb would ask for some questions, so I have, if anybody needs copies, does anybody need a copy? So, this is the, you haven't, because I gave them to you. Larry, you need the other part too? Anybody else? Copies?
All right, so I think those three questions that just answered were the ones that we had sort of outstanding concerns about. Does that seem right? I mean, the distance between the multifamily buildings, or multifamily dwellings was Counselor Cobb's concern, but I think based on this memo, it exceeds the building code, so I don't think that's a concern.
Right.
So, then we just have the definition of multifamily development, and then the preservation of open space. Thoughts, feelings?
Well, I like the, looking at the proposed language on multifamily housing, 8.3. Just looking at the proposed, the addition, the board may require the minimum of 50% of all land. Just not saying that we are requiring it. And again, I think we went around with this for a while before too. 50% of all land not devoted to dwellings, accessory uses. There are so many other considerations that you could have flat lands, and again, would that be passive recreation? I think it's better not to try to overdefine this and keep it simple. So, I personally like the language that Jessica has proposed here.
What do you think about the definition of multifamily, of multifamily housing that's sort of left undefined? Right, we're sort of going on the assumption that...
Right now, the assumption is that because we have a definition for duplex, that multifamily is three units or more.
Okay.
Without having an actual definition for multifamily in the definition section of the zoning.
Just looking at some of the places here where you've got examples, they seem fairly different, one or more, you know?
Well, I think what's interesting is that there's communities that they have multifamily dwelling, and then they have like multiple unit development or multiple group dwelling. So, they basically have differentiated between a building that just has more than three units versus a development that is, you know, 50 units of multiple buildings of various units in each of those buildings, you know? So, they're splitting them up and saying, these are different developments. And I think that's sort of where we struggled with the open space component, is that that language was lifted out of the zoning ordinance with the idea that these would be bigger multifamily developments, 50 units, you know, that sort of thing. Kind of like a cluster subdivision, setting it up some open space requirement as you would under a cluster. But that really is hard to apply when you have a four-unit infill project, like we've seen recently. So, you know, the board can kind of leave it as we had last discussed with the may require the minimum of 50%. I just think that that could be a little bit...
Clear.
Well, it just made, it's hard to level the playing field, I guess, when you're talking from a four-unit infill versus a 50-unit development of multiple buildings.
That discretion makes me nervous too, that it's gonna, you're not helping anybody with notice as far as what's, what we're gonna demand when they come in here.
Right.
And that's what I think we should be shooting for, but...
So, the way that some other communities have addressed open space is they do it by, let me see, there's some that I liked. Look at, hang on. But again, this is for residential multi-unit development. This is for like the big stuff, you know? There's a set aside, not to be built upon, unpaved landscaped or left natural, acceptable balance of trees, site area equal to 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. I mean, I saw a lot of that, of setting a specific square footage to each dwelling unit, but it varied depending on what community.
Well, that makes sense if you can narrow down what kind of project you're doing, because you can see, I mean, if somebody's doing a huge development, it's easier to, you know, figure out how they're gonna allocate the space. But, I mean, the thing I think we're all cognizant of now is that four-unit building that we have, where you're looking at it and going, you can't mandate any set aside for this unless it's, you know, this language here where it's everything you're already not using, which kind of defeats the purpose of a set aside, because they've already decided that they're not gonna use it anyways.
Right.
So, you either make it totally toothless, or you've gotta really narrow down the groupings, otherwise you're gonna mandate something that's gonna make a project unusable.
I mean, the other thought I think I had when I was doing this was that we could potentially just rename this multifamily section to be something like multifamily group dwelling or multiple unit development. And think about this being, because I think that's what this intent was of this section of the ordinance, was to be for these big, multiple-building, multi-unit projects. This wasn't supposed to apply to small infill projects. So, the very simple fix could be to create a definition for multifamily dwelling, rename the section multifamily unit dwelling, or whatever we wanna call it, knowing it applies to these bigger projects. And then, the infill projects just have to abide by the standard dimensional requirements. That could be the easiest fix, and then we don't have to worry about...
The chances are we're gonna have a project of that magnitude...
They're slim.
Is very, very slim.
Right. I see Grafton named it multifamily dwellings, and that's, you know, sort of...
Most of the open space set asides were tied to senior housing developments.
50% is too much.
Cluster developments, you know, they're applying to big development projects, they're not applied to the infill. We have infill. We've got lots that are trying to get redeveloped.
But it's 50% of all land not devoted to dwellings, accessory uses, roads, or other development. So, you could have a small lot with a very large dwelling on it, and you're 50%.
I realize that, but I agree, but the idea of it is, you say so developers coming in from the outside that's gonna invest in this stuff, and he looks at this requirement as it's written with a 50% there, and he says, not gonna bother even trying to put some plans together.
No, the problem here is it's completely toothless, because you have dwellings, accessory uses, roads, or other development. And then, it's 50% of whatever is not covered by those. So, you build whatever building you want within the zoning building ordinance, anything. You build whatever parking lot you can fit on there, you know?
There's a lot of loophole.
Do a playground, put sidewalks, and then whatever's left. It's 50%, but it's already the space you decide you're not gonna use anyway, so it might as well be 100% of that. I mean, it's whatever they're not gonna use. I mean, the other thing we could do is lop off the open space part about this and work on creating a separate multiple-unit dwelling section or something like that.
Right, I mean, you gotta think of, if you lop it off, this then applies to all multifamilies. You have to figure out what your definition is gonna be. So, this would apply to all multifamilies, whether it's a four-unit infill project or whether it's a 50-unit project.
Right.
So, it's really hard to, it's really hard to craft. I mean, I really think the intent of this section was, they eliminated the senior housing multifamily section, multifamily for 55 housing, and then they recrafted this. So, I think the intent of this ordinance was for big projects. I don't think it was for small projects. But again, that was before my time, so I don't...
Really, it's about the categorization. So, really, whether we keep it in here or move it out and make another section, we really need to make two separate sections for multiple family and multiple dwellings.
And I don't know if you really need to make one for a small four-unit infill project. I mean, they just need to abide by parking requirements and setbacks.
Right, but so, I mean, this, if you take off section 8.3 right here, from this section, then it doesn't apply to multifamily housing. And then, you create a multiple-unit dwelling, or whatever we call it, and put similar language in there, maybe with more teeth, but define that as something larger. Does that...
Kind of complicated, more or less.
Of course, it's gonna complicate it more, because we have to do an extra section of it, but I think it'll make it simpler in the end. I mean, the problem is, there's really no way to craft this kind of requirement that's gonna apply to a huge project and a four-unit apartment building. They've gotta be treated differently, I think, personally.
What do you mean by more teeth? Get rid of the word "may"?
Well, I think if you're talking, if you define it to be a big enough project, then you can do the sort of stuff that some of these other towns have done, where it's, you know, 2,000 square feet per each unit or something. I mean, if you're gonna do it on a bigger project where it's only someone that's already gonna build 10 buildings or whatever, then I don't have a problem with making sure that there's space between the buildings and that you're setting stuff aside. But smaller stuff, you're just gonna run into problems. And I think the discretionary part of "may" require makes me really nervous, just because you don't know what's gonna happen based on who's on the board, or what their mood is, and what the project is, and that's wasting everyone's time.
That gets you in trouble. That causes losses, is what that is.
Yeah, I agree.
So, where are we at?
We take out "may" and have to come in with something more.
Jim likes something. Let's hear something positive.
I like Holbrook's definition of "four or more".
Freestanding buildings?
Yeah. I'm crazy. You know, because I think that "four" is a good breakpoint, and it doesn't really necessarily talk about, you know, housing, whether or not this is a big development or not.
So, then what is a unit that has three units in it? Because right now, we have a definition for duplex, but we...
Right.
Unless you created a definition for triplex, which you could. That just seems like another definition.
Well, not only that, this definition, multiple-unit building, this is a four-unit building, and multiple-unit development is one or more multiple-unit buildings. So, your four-unit building is still a multiple-unit development.
Right.
Basically.
That doesn't make sense.
No. It's good to see other places are sort of screwed up there.
But I liked it mostly because it seemed simple, but now I see how simple can kick you in the butt, so.
Well, I think that's like "may". I mean, I think a starting point is if there's multiple buildings in a development, that that's both an easier way to get space out of it, and also, it makes more sense, you're separating the buildings and preserving space, whether it's two buildings and how big the buildings have to be.
So, do you think that this should be reworked then, so to have a multiple development, whatever these, whatever you want?
Multiple-unit development or something?
Section within the multifamily housing ordinance?
I think so.
Is that what you're proposing? I'm just trying to...
My thought isn't necessarily that it has to be in the same section, but that there should be a different section for a multifamily house of, you know, maybe four units or less or something versus, but I mean, the thing, multiple dwelling unit, and then maybe even a multiple dwelling unit, you don't apply the open space preservation to all of them unless it's a certain size. I don't know. But I think it's more complicated than just like approving the language here, unfortunately.
What does council need in terms of reporting back to the whole council on this?
Some thing to do is put it on the agenda, study it some more, and come back.
Well...
Unless you wanna wipe it up tonight.
I don't think we can. I think we'd be just to work our magic and then put together something else, but...
I mean, but the rest, so let's just, I love it beyond just that open space section. Can all of the rest of the stuff move forward to council? Because I think what Samson had said last time, as if we felt like we needed to work on something, it was okay.
Right.
But I wanna be respectful of their process, and, you know, they put this request in a while ago, and so...
I mean, I'm fine on moving forward on everything except for 8.334.
Yeah, that's what I'm sort of, that's what I'm proposing at this point.
Right, and then, I mean, tied into that is how we define multifamily versus multiple-unit or whatever we call it, but...
I agree, that's the only other catch is the definition.
But that's just, that's sort of part and parcel of the open space.
As I say, as long as you don't change the multifamily housing definition so that it affects 8.3, the dimensional requirements.
Right.
Well, we'll leave everything the same except for...
I'm saying, if you wanna use, you know, suddenly start using multiple-unit building instead of multifamily housing, then, you know, I mean, not that we couldn't go back and revisit 8.32, but...
Well, I mean, I think the other way you could do it, if we wanted to move on the other stuff, is we can, if we just get rid of the open space requirement from what's existing, then we can always come back and create a multiple-unit thing with an open space requirement in it. I mean, once we get rid of this, 8.334, we don't have the problem of defining what a multiple unit is, because we don't have any open space obligations. I mean, that's certainly the quickest way to get most of this done.
But you don't wanna eliminate section B, you just wanna eliminate section A of 8.334. If you refer to your zoning. So, multifamily dwelling shall be separated, because you all bring your zoning books every meeting, right? Okay. So, multifamily dwelling shall be separated from adjacent properties by buffer strips consisting of trees and fencing sufficient to minimize the visual and noise impacts in the development. So, I don't think, you know, blah, 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 blah. I don't think you want to get rid of that. I think you just wanna eliminate A. So, it's almost just...
So, I mean, we can get rid of A, and then...
Do we need to get rid of it tonight, or just, I mean, we can move on the other options without getting rid of A, and then just revisit it?
Right, well, I mean, A, as it's written now though, obligates even that four-unit apartment to preserve open space of 50%.
And dedicate it to the city.
And dedicate it to the city, grassland, like that part is the part. And we could switch it to this sort of toothless "may" thing for now, and then fix it later, but that seems like we don't really want that in there at all. But I don't know, I mean, I guess the question is what the timeline is for the council and whether we wanna move on three-quarters of this now and come back and work on the last chunk, or whether we should hold off.
There's really no timeline for us now, but I would like to move forward with some of the agenda, just to clean up the language, or to clean up the clarification where it says 10 instead of 12.
Right.
You know, the maximum height for accessory buildings, well, we're striking that, but 6.74, should be 25 feet. I think there was, originally it said 12 and then 25, just to be clear on some of that, I think it'd be better to move forward with...
My question also, I mean, these were amendments that were put forth by Councillor Cobb, and he's done at the end of this year, so I don't know what happens then... Cobb, and he's done at the end of this year, so I don't know what happens then if this gets delayed and he's gone. I just don't know the process going on, so.
Sure.
Well, I mean, how long?
Even though he's gone.
I mean, these need to be done.
Yeah, I mean, we've continued, we've asked for continuation, so it's.
I mean, how long would it take the planning department to put together something? I mean, this is like a more comprehensive reworking of the zoning ordinance.
I would recommend that you move forward on the easy fixes.
Yeah.
And if, um.
Do you think we should cut A?
I think, I think you should for now.
And then we can go back and put in the open space?
Yes.
And distinguish between different projects?
Yes.
Does the definition matter, 6.83, multifamily?
Well, right now, they're all, it's everything three or higher.
It's three units or up. That's how it's been interpreted, so I think if that, if you're okay with that continuing interpretation at this point.
Okay.
What are you guys thinking about that? Does that make sense?
I would be willing to approve everything except A, 8.334A.
Striking A?
I didn't hear you, what did you say?
I'd be willing to approve everything except 8.334A.
I mean, we just come back to it.
We need to craft something for, at some point. I mean, I don't want to get rid of it completely. I do like open space.
Yeah, you have to come back to it.
But right now, the way that this is crafted.
Well, we can initiate, we can initiate a proposal as well, right?
Absolutely.
The planning board. So maybe what we should do is do all of this but A, and we'll put it on our agenda to get some sort of draft together, and then we can sit down with you guys and try to figure out this open space part.
Sounds good to me.
Does that make sense?
So we're not striking A, we're just, you're going to come up with a proposal? Is that it?
I think we should strike A, because right now, it's the obligation to preserve 50%, which is going to hamstring a lot of slum of projects. And I don't think we should edit, amend it the way it's been amended with that sort of toothless thing, because I don't know that that makes any difference, but if people want to, I would go along with that. I don't think it really does much of anything, but.
I don't know what you've got, I mean, just on the bad one. Harry, what do you think?
Sounds good. Motion to approve amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Well, hold on, let's figure out if we're comfortable with striking A or not.
Right.
What are you going to, Don, you're green lighting anything, so we'll move on.
No, I'm not agreeing with you. Not agreeing with you.
You're uncomfortable with getting rid of the 8.334A, right?
I'm happy that's going. Well, I don't know, I just, the idea of striking it without having something in its place, you know, it's just kind of, you know, when will, when will we get to it? You know, what if we don't agree with it at that point?
Right.
So it's.
That's the problem, too. But that's the thing, is, I mean, we're taking the risk on that to try to get three quarters of it done now.
You need the toothless thing in there.
We can amend it to have this language in here? I mean, that is at least something.
And again, I mean, it gives you, gives up the discretion of the board, but, and whether or not you get in trouble for that later on is.
Hopefully, it'll only be in there for a brief window of time and nothing will see its way through, and I'm content to do that. I mean, I don't know that.
But until you, I'm going to say overdefine it, but until you start looking at some of these and talk about the number of units or the size, I mean, I was looking at the square footage, spraying tree, 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit, right? You either have to overregulate it, or you overdefine it, or just leave it.
Or the two of us.
Because like I said, there's just too many variables there on, you know, ways that you can have swampland and basically leave that as 50% open space for passive recreation.
Right.
Or more.
Right.
Can I ask a real stupid question here?
Never, Harry.
One thing I'm having a real hard time with here is, we're talking about open space and bribery requirements, okay? What are we talking about? Actually usable land on a piece of property? What do we do? Get a yardstick and run around and get every piece of property that's not being used? I mean, it should be usable, shouldn't it? Should be, should be, I think should stipulate that, well, if you have a, you know, if you're going to put a project on a certain piece of property, and you have a property that's left over, it should be usable, not just two feet here and 10 feet back there, you know what I'm trying to say?
This is the setbacks and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, so what do you do? You have somebody that puts something together, has to go running around with a tape ledger and figure out what he's got, and then, I got the requirement met, and then all is a bunch of jig-jacket pieces.
For bigger projects, you can define, I mean, some of the, some of the language that they've used is, you know, you can make it available for public use if it's a bigger project, but, but, I mean, it's all like, different projects have different things, you know? But I mean, yeah, I mean, some of these are, it's going to be, we're talking about it with that four-building unit, where if you set aside like a 10-foot strip along the side.
Exactly. What are you going to do? Put a barbecue pit in there or something, or?
Well, you're not necessarily going to use it, but I do think the open space has some inherent value, even if it's not used, just as open space and, you know, minimizing crowding and that sort of stuff. But I would agree, I mean, I think that, and you can do, you know, open space available for residents if it's a larger project, and you don't want to make it public property, which I think can be sticky. But I mean, you've got to define, I think these things all have to be done based on different projects, because I don't know how you apply the same standard.
Just because people can't use it doesn't mean that it doesn't have value, that there's critters that need certain habitats to survive, and there's value in that as well, just leaving.
We have, we have pulled this, this little development up on Hendrick Street, and it was one of like Wave or something.
One's wrong.
You know what I'm talking, yeah.
Your one miller.
And they built about, what, seven or eight homes up there, and they had a piece of property that was left over and actually gave it to the city, and you could put pitting tables in there or whatever. You know, I can see some white lack of that, you actually used all the land over, you know, going to fall size, and they had this extra piece of the site, he could put another house there, he decided not to, and they actually gave it to, gave it to the city.
But you've got to also make sure, first of all, there's enough space that's going to be useful, and second of all, the city wants it, because you don't want to burden the city with another 10-foot by 4-foot strip of land somewhere. No, I know, but that's what I'm saying, is to do it right with everyone, so.
Harry, right down on Hendrick Street before that, just, you know, where Teddy Boruski's old house was, down there, Peters? They got a, they got a section there, they put a big sign up, nobody ever uses it. You know, one of these, East Hampton is land force, very land force, we're a very small community. Somewhere along the line is one of the new work rises down, open space, open space, okay? Okay, open space is fine, is open space coming off the tax roll? We have to keep as many things on the tax roll. That's why I was happy to see this project with Deets, a piece of commercial property coming, no services. So we're, I think they're going to, you have to be careful, somewhere along the line in the future, talking about open space. I mean, there's some people who just want open space. It's land out by me that we own. All my neighbors are there all the time. I mean, you know, I mean, and, but I mean, it's terrible. Taxes are, taxes are killing people in this town, too.
Yeah, so.
I'm unlike you, but I don't think we have a choice. We keep them.
So we do all the edits as proposed here, including 8.334A.
Right.
And we make an effort to distinguish between different kinds of developments in the very near future and deal with the open space aspect.
Right.
More in depth.
Right.
I motion to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance.
One second. All favoritism proceed.
Aye.
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 All right. War was not troubling, Harry.
You can't just build and land for taxes, and you can't keep thinking of money.
You take, you take right away from the property, and people should get a special, special, special rate.
All right. Next up is now.
Thank you, councilors.
Thanks, guys.
And keep the trees going, so you can grow easier. Just remember that. Get oxygen in the air. All right.
Medical marijuana.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep.
I just say, I want to hear this. I said, I want to hear this. I'm going to start off by saying I like the work you did there.
Thank you.
It looks like it's very comprehensive.
I absolutely do. There's actually, could be some copies slipped around up there, no?
No, you can't.
I'm going to look on.
But I have four copies put in.
No, you took them out.
Can you come back? I've got two more papers that we can use over here. You're going to have to, as ordinance subcommittees, you might as well take it now.
It's on the way. Or something.
And I can read it.
We're not in a hearing, this is just a discussion. Okay.
Well.
Anybody in the room? Chuck? Anybody have any thoughts on this after looking through it?
Yes. I know a lot of towns are putting a moratorium on this whole thing, and I'm not sure if that's what we're going to be doing or not, but if we do that.
We can't put a moratorium on it as a use. It's illegal. You have to allow it as a use. You can put a moratorium out for six months or so to craft an ordinance?
Well, that's what I mean.
Oh, okay. All right, just want to be clear.
I'm not saying get rid of it.
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood when you said moratorium, that it's not prohibiting it as a use of buildings.
Right. What I think we should do, this is going to come down sooner or later, but what I think we should do is find out exactly where in the city that this would be eligible for.
I'll tell you right now, I already have a company that's identified a site and is negotiating a deal with a landowner.
Where would that?
At Mills.
Oh, Mills.
It's not going to do things, you know that?
Might not.
No way.
Um. I'm sorry, you are in favor of a moratorium? Or you're not?
Well, I don't even want to talk about a moratorium, I just want to talk about where we could, where we could actually have a dispensary.
Yeah.
That's what I want to talk about.
Well, the way it was crafted is that we've got, you go to the back, there's a table of uses, so it's, it's basically split into two different types of medical marijuana. When the license comes down from the state, a company can do three things. They can grow, they can process, which means dry, turn into tinctures, oils, all, any of that stuff, and then they can distribute. So when I worked on this, in this regional working group to craft a model ordinance, we determined, and I worked with the planners of, just background, I've worked with the planners of Westfield, Amherst, Holyoke, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to craft something. So we all worked together to get to, kind of weed through the DPH regulations, submit questions to DPH, get their feedback, talk to the health directors in the communities to see how they would be regulating. So we spent a lot of time collecting information as we were drafting this. It was our opinion that there's sort of two different sides. There's the retail side, which is the dispensary, and then there's the industrial side, which is the growing and the processing. And so I think what makes sense for East Hampton, based on that discussions, is to have two separate definitions. One, that's an offsite medical marijuana dispensary, so that's the retail side. In our discussions with individuals who have actually operated medical marijuana facilities in Oregon, in California, the retail side, we sort of set a square foot limit at 2,500, which I think is even bigger than what most retail would need for this type of use. Typically, it's like a pharmaceutical counter, where they walk in, there's a counter, there's product, there's storage and security systems in the back of where they're storing the product, but the actual retail space is actually pretty small. And so, thinking about allowing that by a special permit in the highway business district, industrial as a site plan approval, and the mill industrial as a special permit. So that's what I'm proposing, and absolutely up for discussion. And then the industrial side, which would be categorized in a different part of the table of uses, is the registered marijuana dispensary, which could be, could be the whole shebang. Somebody could actually create a facility which does all three of the things that they're licensed to do. They can have the dispensary there as well, and that's how this is, but mostly it's dealing with the industrial side, which is the growing and the processing. So allowing that only in the industrial zone under plan approval and in the mill industrial by a special permit.
So if you have a growing and the processing, you can't be in highway business?
You can't be in highway business if you're growing and processing. You can only be, you have to think of it as, as a large-scale industrial.
Right.
Process. It's, it's different, it's different, but it's no different than if somebody wanted to grow hydroponic basil and dry it and process it and package it and send it out on its way. So it's an, it's an industrial processing, and so that's why the planners, when we worked in this working group, we had this agreement, that this is, this use really is most appropriate in those zones that allow industrial activity. It isn't really necessarily appropriate in a downtown business district. So I think there are sites, Harry. I think that we've got, I mean, yes, our industrial zones are small, but we do have some sites available, and there are vacancies in the mills right now, and they have, you know, 25,000 square feet of empty floors that could, could grow this. And the interesting thing is, one of the things I learned is that these, the folks that are growing and processing are looking for a controlled environment. They're not looking for a field. They're looking for a controlled environment where they can have sunlight for 12 hours and then darkness for 12 hours. And so, most of the applicants that have made it through that first cut through DPH regulations are approaching communities that have mills and large industrial buildings that are, are ready to move in. They can't get financing to build a new facility, so they're looking for these lease agreements so that they can essentially just move into an existing building, set up a lease agreement, maybe a rent-to-own situation, but they're not looking to build anything new. They're not looking to be in a, in a field, they're not looking to have a greenhouse. They're approaching communities, Holyoke, East Hampton, places that have large vacant mills. That's the ideal situation for these companies at this point.
I thought the number of dispensaries was regulated.
It is, and so, you know, there's going to be 35 in the state, and they're saying that they could be, they're not going to be necessarily geographically located where you would think the highest population is. What they're trying to do is prevent people from growing at home, so they're actually going to be dispersing them throughout the state and trying to encourage some sort of delivery system so that people can't claim a hardship and grow in their own, in their own properties.
Yeah, I think it's one per county, but no more than five.
No more than five per county.
So I was a little confused with the proximity of residential uses, because you're looking in section C, unlocation.
Yeah.
And so, 1C, under that, you know, not within 300 feet of any residential use except mixed-use buildings, but then C3 has, I think it's missing some language, but it's basically RMD or OMD, not within a building containing residential units, so. So...
Jesse, page in...
I'm on page four, under C. I'm in...
Page C3?
I'm trying to reconcile C1C with C3.
Okay.
Where if it's a mixed-use, I'm assuming a mixed-use building is something like the mills that have residential as well?
Right, and that's what I was trying to, was trying to... And I talked to Amherst about this 'cause I actually stole this language from Amherst, that, you know, we do have mixed-use buildings that are mills that do have some residential component to them. I wanted to make it available to those property owners as this could be something that potentially could go in even though they have residential units.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, it'd be great if somebody could take over one Ferry Street.
Right.
But that's not gonna happen.
So I'm wondering how we reconcile that or if that's even... Well, I mean, I think that's the problem is that we want those mill... I mean, those mill buildings are ideal locations for it. I mean, I suppose you can still have the same C3 that also has the comma, except mixed-use buildings.
Or we could say within a building solely containing residential units, such as transit housing, group housing, such as hotel...
I guess. I mean...
Isn't three missing kind of a beginning?
Yeah, it's missing an RMD or OMDD facility shall not be located...
Okay.
In building, or no, yeah, just to that.
Because the way it is now, it's gotta be within a building containing residential units.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, come on. I mean, the other thing is, I don't know why our concerns about putting it next door to someone's house are any different than our concerns about putting a grow facility one floor above 18 apartments? I mean, other than the fact that those buildings are ideal for it, but...
Fire, danger, and I mean...
Well, I mean, I would say if there's any difference, it might be more dangerous in a mixed-use mill building just 'cause they're in the actual same facility. But for some reason, I also seem more comfortable with that as well. I mean, I guess you're buying or renting an apartment in a mixed-use building, so you're kind of on notice that any of those things could pop up, but...
Well, in most of those mill owners, they're pretty good about separating rental from the industrial. I know in Eastworks, you know, all the residential are on the top floor. And any light industrial activity has is basically in the basement.
Right.
So he does a good job in separating those uses. And I would think that any business owner that's gonna be managing a mixed-use building would wanna make sure that they're taking that sort of stuff into consideration 'cause they're not gonna be able to rent their units. They're all rental properties. So...
Well, I'm wondering if there's a way to move it around within a building and say it can't be on the same floor, residential units, or something like that. I don't know. It just struck me that I don't know how we sort of reconcile those two scenarios.
I don't think anybody that owns a building like that would want one of those either.
Really?
Yeah.
I think there's probably a lot of rental income that it could generate.
Yeah.
Especially in a mill building that's got empty space.
Well, I don't think... You want to rent the space to a lot of different people, and you know, I mean... Like, some people would say you got drug culture like that, you're dispensing it here. I don't wanna, I don't wanna convince.
Well, for one thing, it might not be a dispensary. It might just be where they're preparing it. But also, this is, it's pretty regulated. It'd be like, you know, having a pharmacy, and it's not...
That would be one of my questions is when you're looking at, you know, the difference between the RMD and the OMMD. If there's only 35 dispensaries, does that mean that if you pull the permit for one of these dispensaries and you decided just to manufacture to cultivate?
You can't. You have to do all three.
So you have to do all three?
You have to do all three, and some of the...
On the same site?
No, you don't. And it doesn't even have to be in the same town and it doesn't have to be in the same county. Somebody could have, get a license. They could be growing and processing, I don't know, in Munson and shipping it to Boston to the dispensary.
It's owned by the same...
But they have to have the same license, right. And you can't distribute anybody else's product. That's why you have, you get the license from all three.
But you can grow in more than one spot and sell at one dispensary, right? I mean, the license is basically for the dispensary and the process.
Right. You can have up to three separate locations.
Right.
I noticed that you can't, it doesn't include any other businesses or services. And the definition of RMD is rather limited. For instance, they couldn't sell a marijuana logo hat or a button or a T-shirt.
No, this is the state definition from the DPH.
Or they couldn't sell wrapping papers or paraphernalia. It's really just the product itself.
Where are you seeing that?
I don't know about that.
Well, if you look at it on page three, A1093A1, at the end, it may not include other businesses and services in the definition. And the definition's on page one, where it says that including development of related products, such as food, tinctures, aerosols, oils, ointments, transfers, transport, sales, distributors, dispensers, administers, products containing marijuana... Oh, wait, I guess related supplies.
Or educational material. I mean, I think that you can't have like, you know, a cellphone store or something else in there. But like, I think probably anything that's like... But I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't know, related supplies.
Yeah, related supplies is kind of generically...
Could you sell coffee? Probably not.
And the other thing, administers marijuana. If you're, you can eat wrapping papers in order to be able to administer it to yourself. I mean, they were talking a lot about vapor systems. So in having a location to be able to train people on how to use the vapor machine.
So you do educational...
Right. And one of the companies is talking about having a dispensary with... And I don't know if this is because they have to be a nonprofit and so I don't know if they take their profits and then they put it into related services, but also having like, offering yoga and massage and acupuncture and other things in the same building as a dispensary.
That's intriguing.
So that might be part of the, you know, kind of related...
On page three in 1093B, number three, why the number, why 2,500 square feet?
That's just the number that we bounced around and had discussions with and felt like that was as big as anybody would ever really need. I mean, again, these are generally smaller retail operations. But again, the number's up for discussion.
And the OMDD, that's the grow?
No.
No.
That's selling. Yes, they have it backwards.
Okay, I'll save that.
That's a dispensary.
Okay, that helps, yeah.
Well, that's just the retail side.
The RMD, it doesn't have...
It could have retail.
A limitation in that way, a square footage?
No, it doesn't. And we've bounced that around a lot too. We did have some square footage numbers in there, but when we were discussing it, we thought, well, why would we wanna limit? Somebody wants to have a 100,000, not 100, but yeah, 100,000 square foot facility in Springfield.
Right, but so you could sort of, if you're both on the same location, you could end up with a 4,000 square foot storefront where you're selling because it's part of your full facility. Whereas if you had it separated, you could only do the 2,500.
Maybe.
To the extent you wanted to.
Yeah. Potentially. Or if we wanted to administer it in such a way here in East Hampton, that the retail side is still limited to 2,500.
Right, right.
Also, on page three, same section under B, you and I talked about this once before, just the odor for marijuana. And my question is, is that even possible? Can, do they have the ability to contain it?
I would, I don't...
So what are your old mills?
They can absolutely think of that.
Yeah, with their gloves, man. I can see what he else had, exhaust fan, oh, stand up there.
Or acid. But the treatments they have for air quality control, you can control that.
Absolutely.
Tell you a story about that after.
So this is sort of hermetically sealed building?
Unless you're small.
Yeah, exactly.
That sounds expensive.
Well, it might be expensive, but they have that incorporated.
There was another piece there. The registration card on the end of page three and top of page four that says two inches on eight, is that or more?
So this is the signage will be displayed on the entrance in plain sight stating the registration card issued by the Mass Department of Public Health required in text to interest in...
I thought or more.
Well, more or less, maybe more. I think it's just a regular placard.
Because they might, okay.
We have a signage ordinance that's, you know, I don't wanna...
I understand. You could go two blocks.
Or just be in using the same sort of...
If somebody was gonna be growing that stuff around your old mills, it'd have to be all quarter up then. But it says right here, it says, you can't, you can't see what's going on inside of it. It says, "All aspects of used facility relevant to acquisition, cultivation, possession, processing, sale, distribution, dispensing, or whatever. Products containing marijuana related supply or educational materials must take place at a fixed location within a fully enclosed building and shall not be visible from the exterior of the business." So you can't add windows there?
Well, you can't, it'd just be tinted or mirrored or something like that.
Well, yeah, they can't see the side.
They wanna control the light cycle anyways.
They control the lighting anyways.
I imagine they want these mill buildings 'cause they want something big enough that they could put a low-quality building inside of it. Something that doesn't have to withstand weather but can provide a controlled environment. Can easily move it around.
They gotta grow it a little bit, you know, like it's colder.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to...
They have to have a control.
That's quite right. On page five, E4C, looking at that, it says that it was within 48 hours of such lapse. And I wondered if maybe, and I'm not sure about this, but my initial thought was if that should instead be at least 48 hours prior to such a lapse. It seemed like you want more notice than 48, you know, sometime within 48 hours. That means you could do it at one hour. Oh, yeah, and one hour overlapping. It just seemed...
I think it's after the lapse, isn't it?
Yes.
So if any of these lapses occur, you have to tell the permitting authority within 48 hours of the lapse.
Oh, after?
It's an after it happens.
Okay, I understand. Okay, so you've gotta tell them after I'm with it.
Now, a lot of these requirements are pulled straight out of the state regs. It's just putting it into a zoning code. I think I sent you all a copy of the state regs, right?
Just out of curiosity, why is it after the lapse? Why are we being notified after it's done?
I think it might be part of the, I think that's part of the state regs. But I can look.
It looks to me like it may be things that are outside of the control of the applicant anyways. So if your business fails or something like that, or if you stop doing business, I mean, you could make that decision and then you have up to two days to tell people. But I don't think it's as big a deal if they stop doing business.
That was all the points.
So the other, I think I mentioned in when I sent this to you is that I've sent it to the police chief. I sent it to the police, I sent it to fire, I sent it to the board of health. The police responded. One of the captains reviewed it and he had, just wanted more information regarding security. So I pulled out the section from the regs that's seven pages related to security and what they need to do. He was comfortable with that. And as long as he felt like he had an opportunity to look at the site and comment on the security measures before it was approved, they were okay with the language of the ordinance as drafted. So...
I gotta tell you, I'm okay with it too.
I'm still confused about the residential part. The proximity of residences and how we wanna address that. But I mean, other than that, the general scope that I'm comfortable with. I mean, I don't know. You wanna talk to the other people in the group or something about what the thought is with the proximity of residences? Or if we just wanna think about how, I mean, I guess it's not an entirely unique situation with the mill buildings, but...
Well, that's why, again, when I was working, we had our last working group meeting that I was talking to the planners about it and the planner from Amherst, they had the C is the language that they use to allow it to happen in mixed-use buildings. I mean, we could potentially scratch three? I don't know.
Well, I mean, or you could just put the same, except mixed-use buildings, under three.
Okay.
But...
Within a building containing residential units, except mixed-use buildings.
I mean, I guess, I guess C kinda covers that already, doesn't it? It's gonna have a residential use.
It's...
But I don't know, is a motel like a residential use? That's like a business use, isn't it?
No, I think it's under our residential categories.
It is, okay.
Uh, hold on. Please hold.
I think you're right. It does inherently kind of look like C covers it.
No, it's not. It must be under commerce, community, or commercial, retail. It's under retail service.
So we would have to have language that says... Although maybe we could just put that under C.
Yeah.
Right, within a building containing residential units, including blah, 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 except mixed-use buildings. My concern is, I mean, how is a mixed-use building? I don't know what the definition, definitions off the top of my head. And if that's like, if you could somehow have a hotel with a restaurant in it or something like that, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And then you could also throw in a dispensary. And I don't know if that's a problem, I don't know if that's a problem or not. I mean, it's still...
Do you wanna just scratch C and just move the except mixed-use buildings language down here? Is that...
I think that works.
That works better.
That solves the issue? Is everybody in agreement on that?
I mean, it solves the conflict. I don't know if everyone's comfortable with the idea that, you know, like, the hotel over by the, in Northampton by the highway, you can give them the restaurant and put in a dispensary there. But it's really not much different than putting it on the third floor of, you know...
The only mixed-use we have is industrial, right? It's only the MI that we're talking about.
Right.
And what you're saying is scratch C1C and instead make three, say an RMD or OMDD facility shall not be located within a building blah, 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 comma, except mixed-use buildings?
Right.
Making all that right?
Yep.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Because it's almost best.
So that's the only change then?
Yeah, and that missing language. I mean, there's a couple other typos in here.
Oh, there are?
I don't know.
Let me know my typos.
All right. They're not really bad typos.
Okay, well, that's good. Did the councilors have any comments on this?
It's the first time I'm actually seeing it. So it's one of the reasons why I decided to stick around. I have a question on page A. Interadditional notes.
Yep.
I'm looking, again, this is where it kind of defines it that it doesn't have to be on the same site, but you know, the licenses for all three. But I'm looking down at the third bullet. It says, "An RMD can either cultivate and sell or just sell, but must be provide," so I mean the typo, "but must be provide its medical marijuana from another RMD that cultivates, which is owned by the same nonprofit." So are they saying there that, I read you could have, one nonprofit could own three of these licenses? And if they had one of their licenses, they might not use to cultivate but just to sell in one location? Is that what that's trying to say?
Great, but what number are you on, or three again?
The third bullet, yeah.
Oh, number one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was looking under three and I couldn't find it.
Because then the fourth bullet says, "One nonprofit RMD may not buy cultivated medical marijuana from another nonprofit's RMD except in emergencies." But it's just, it might be the typo that was thrown out. But just understand that a nonprofit could actually hold three licenses and be able to have three separate cultivation sites, three separate dispensaries, but may choose not to, to only have one cultivation site.
Right, right.
All right, so do we need to do anything with this?
Well, I'll make the changes, but if you're okay with the changes that we've discussed, then I will pen it into the document.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so... So we need a motion from somebody to, I guess, submit this as amended?
I motion to approve this as amended with typos, with the amended language, which I'll type up, and minor typos corrected. Is that good enough or do we have to identify the minor?
To be sent to... Chad has something he'd like to say.
No, no, it's just...
He's seconding with this one.
Yeah, I get it. It's a silent second. I'm putting this in our planning board. Look, Chad is not allowed to verbalize any of his answers in the future.
Never in my well history of living in his tongue that I ever figured me sitting here talking about having a marijuana dispensary. I remember going down when I was in seventh grade or sixth grade at Mapple Street Junior High School.
Remember the cameras running there?
With the East Hampton police chief being down there, grilling all the kids in school about anybody passing out anything or trying to sell anybody anything on cottage and units. Don't forget that. Now, here we are, now, talking about a dispensary. And then how, how, terms have changed. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
All right, we got a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? All right. Smoke it if you got it.
Your father might have been there.
Or rub it on.
Or drink the milkshake, or whatever.
Rub it, drink it. All right.
So council, you'll be seeing this coming, coming your way within the next, uh...
All right. Say, council?
The DPH.
Next up is the street acceptance request. Hold it right, on circle.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Very well believed, accepted.
Thank you, councilors.
I know the room without a planning board.
Thank you.
Don't stop for too long.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
You got me.
I will, I will.
You see us do?
All right, let's finish our meeting, come on, move along.
We can't get out of here, we've been here all night.
We're gonna get out of here.
Right.
Thanks a lot.
All right.
Okay, so, I only made one copy of this, I think. So, I, we received another street acceptance request from city council for Willow Drive and Autumn Circle.
Why, just out of curiosity?
Because it's part of the process, it's the procedure, that's what you're asking.
No, I was gonna ask why this, I mean, we're not making this decision, last time we decided on the street acceptance, this time it goes to city council, and they're asking us our opinion?
That's what happened last time, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, same process. And just sort of as a side note, before you start that, well, wanted to give it that first, and then I got a side note memo.
Okay, did everyone get a chance to look at this stuff?
Did I send it to you?
Yeah.
Oh, I did, okay.
But it was in that email, fifteen attacks, and so, most people just don't... Uh, it went in there. I mean, I just...
Last time you just made a motion to refer to the city engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna do the same thing.
I think that makes sense, I think we should recommend that we defer to the determination of the city engineer on the acceptance of the streets.
I need a second.
No, no, I'm not making the motion, I'm just floating that trial line.
You gotta sell it, dude.
All right. Make this, make the motion.
Then there's a, right, still my thunder owner. Just what he said.
All right.
You can vote him in his chair in January.
Do we, do we have a second? This power's already gone to my head.
A second.
I'm suspending election.
You got it first.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I just wanna pass this out as a side note, this came in from the city engineer in late September, and this is, I'll have to make another copy, sorry, we only had four members in September. So this is just as regards to the street acceptance, and this is just kind of like a commentary on how the process has been going, and I just think it's important for you to be CC'd on this correspondence that he sent to the public safety committee about just how the process has been going in past years, that they perform their regular maintenance before, blah, 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 they still plow, they still do these things, even on, on accepted roads, and so, anyways, it's more informational.
All right.
Okay.
We got another ZBA special permit request for recommendations.
Okay, so this, this is actually a little bit different. The floodplain ordinance requires that the planning board comments, I mean, you comment anyway, because it's a special permit, but they, it specifically calls out that the planning board must comment, and it sets a time limit, it says that you have to comment within, I wanna say twenty-five days, and the ZBA has already heard this application.
Yeah.
They just can't make a final decision until they hear from the planning board, so by you taking action on it tonight, it expedites the permit by one week for the applicant.
Okay.
All right, so you can still, you can still say no comment if you want to, you just need to...
We need to do something?
You need to do something, you need to take some action.
Okay, I really like our, our standard response on these, to defer to the zoning board and not make any, take any action, but I'm always open to suggestions on these things.
I concur.
Do you still move?
I still, I still say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining, no?
Thank you.
Do you need this back?
Yes, please. Okay, so, reminder, well, half of these are gone, but CPDC training, handing these out, some of you already received them, this is the fall, annual fall training of CPDC, they have workshops throughout the entire state.
Much more difficult to attend than the last one, they're all over the place, I actually tried to get the one that was in Pittsburgh.
Those are all the same, true.
But it's just, it's hard.
It's hard, it's hard, they try to, they try to, they usually try to have two per geographic region, this is an annual thing, the first one's already passed for the Pioneer Valley, there's a second one that's on Calzine, I'm not sure if that would be of much interest.
There's one in there that's clearly the best of them, and unfortunately, I've already had it, but I think that's the count, you may have heard of her, she's teaching that class.
Local celebrities, I only, yeah, I saw that.
Open meeting law, yeah, it was open meeting law, public law requirements, and Code of Ethics, it was like, gave a presentation last week. Very exciting, riveting, riveting information. So, just, you know, as an FYI, and we do have planning board training, funds, and you're planning more budgets, so if there's anything in there that you would like to go to, I don't know if there's anything special permit related, that might be good, or decision drafting would be good.
I'm gonna try to go around.
But anyway, so that's just an FYI, and let me know if there's anything you're interested in.
Awesome.
Okay.
Planning board clerk?
So I have put in a, Jim, thank you for doing minutes.
What a great diplomatic star.
But, but you're fine, no, so...
He is.